United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do need to amend the agenda to include approve the minutes of Friday's closed session. If I could give a motion to amend.
The most.
Okay.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Great. Now can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Approve the minutes of the December ninth meeting and the December thirteenth meeting.
Motion approved.
For second.
Yeah, second, all in favor.
All right.
Approve county or play, I'm sorry, approve. Approve employee claims filed with the county auditor for the amount of $2,788.22.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. Approved claims filed with the county auditor for the amount of $135,568.42.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, approve border health appointments.
It was Josh Bobbin, Janie Budzine, and Tricia Crest. They have currently been serving and are willing to serve another three-year term.
I would make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. Approve planning your cemetery appointments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
Um, we still have one more. Mr. Vanderhert's term expires. And I have not received anything from him. I don't know if anybody's reached out to him or not.
I would heard see.
Make a note to call.
Okay. So approve the ones that we have. Motion on that.
Yeah, John motion Clayton second.
All in favor.
All right.
Approved master matrix resolution. We do this yearly.
Yep, I make a motion to go ahead and prove that resolution.
Yeah, first.
Second.
Second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, um, and discuss budget director appointment.
There's a resolution in there. Um, there's been a lot of talk on our auditor's base camp. It's basically formalized in everything I already do regarding the budget and the fiscals for the county. The majority of it is per Iowa code. It truly doesn't change anything except for stating I will continue to do this and it's my responsibility as it has for the last four years.
When we brought Anne on, I thought.
She's not a budget director. She's hired as a finance deputy.
Okay. That's.
The only thing I see, I haven't got a chance to review Anne's, the finance deputy's job description thoroughly, but I, I ran across a couple of things that are the same as the resolution and hers.
Yeah, basically it's all, overall, it's ultimately my responsibility to see that these duties are completed. And so that's what, I mean, it's not duplicating anything. Basically as some of the, some of the things Anne may be doing also, but it's just pointing out that this is my responsibility to take care of this for the county.
I just want to make sure that there wasn't nothing, one document wasn't dispute with the other ones.
Oh, no, it's not.
I do know that it, it adds a lot of cost. There is some counties that have their own budget director that works right underneath the board of supervisors. The closest one to it is at Bramble, but that adds a lot of county costs.
Yeah, that's a completely separate, um, job.
By the time, so by the time you would take the salary thing, you're looking at seventy some thousand and put the benefits on that, you're pushing right up there to have your own stand-alone budget director right underneath the board of supervisors, so.
And that's basically like why we went with a finance deputy in my office to help pick that up and the other things that go on.
I think it does clarify what you do in the budget process. And I think I would make a motion to approve it.
And the first.
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, approve Buchanan County safety pledge.
That was Brian's, um, I did do it up in a, I took the wording that he sent me and did put it in a resolution. I don't recall ever doing a safety pledge before, but maybe it's something we do every few years. I don't know. I just did it in a resolution with the wording that Brian gave to me.
Basically what this is, is that we've got a new local road safety plan now that they're, I haven't seen the final copy of it yet. But that's what they're trying to put in. And then also, we are one of the candidates for several million in safety funds too. We're still a candidate on that, but this is part of it. That is what we discussed a while back about roundabout. And we dropped off the separate trail. We had to scale back anyway.
I think this is probably only by doing this is probably going to help us get out of funding.
That's what it helps to, yes.
We've got the safety plan because if they, if we.
Without doing it, I.
They're going to say, well, you don't have a safety plan.
Yep. I can't get any federal funds without safety plan. And basically what it's saying, in this pledge, we formalize Buchanan County's support for the strategies outlined in Iowa's five-year strategic highway safety plan and the overall vision of zero deaths on Iowa's public roadways. In addition, we affirm Buchanan County's goal of dramatic decrease in roadway fatalities and serious injuries by the year 2030 and 2050. Respectively as detailed in the resolution adopted in 2022 by our Board of Supervisors for participation in Iowa County Engineers Association, ICEA safety grant for all SS4A grant applications. Buchanan County is committed to implementing safety strategies outlined in the safety action plan and will assist road users with staying safe while driving, walking, or riding in Buchanan County. Buchanan County is dedicated to measuring its progress towards these goals and providing quantitative metrics as we continue to take the necessary steps to improve safety in the county's roadways in order to realize our eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by 2050. It doesn't really commit you to doing anything other than saying we support the reduction fatalities.
Well, I think you've made significant strides in, in safety over recent years, so.
We used to run at the state average and we are basically half the state average in fatal and major injuries now.
I didn't see anywhere worse than widening the roads.
Pardon me?
Didn't see anywhere worse than widening the roads.
Well, there's times when you have to, and, and we start looking at, yeah, matter of fact, the safety grant on W-13. And we revised it, um, a hundred straight to, on W-13, a hundred to a hundred and tenth is narrow. And that's in that Amish community. So for that mile, we would request to widen that out, get funding to widen it out.
I'm assuming that means we have an Amish community here. I will say that when it makes a statement of driving, walking, or riding, cover the Amish in there because you're either riding on the horse or riding in a buggy.
Yeah, and that, the Amish actually make Iowa's safety grant more more, look better on the federal level.
Yeah, I think it's a must, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to read that county's safety pledge.
I will second that.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
All right, the safety pledge is assumed. Um, approve monthly departmental reports, departmental budget reports.
In our package.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. Place and file the following annual management plan. Allen S. Monahan Farms Incorporated, Middlefield Township, Section 36. G and W Livestock, Middlefield Township, Section 25. Flexen Howler Farms, Middlefield Township, Section 3.
Motion to place and file.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
Motion carries. Um, set public hearings for zoning requests in for Chris.
The resolutions are in the packet. I can't remember which one was first, but.
Born trigger was that.
Okay, thank you. 12:30 at 9:15, and then at 9:20, there's two hearings.
Is that gonna? What about a public hearing for the MS?
That will be next Monday and that will be the third and final.
Okay. Let me make sure we weren't overlapping.
Thank you.
The thirtieth, what's the times again?
9:15 and 9:20.
Space in between that two for five minutes?
Yeah.
Make a motion. We sit the public hearings on 12:30 at 9:15 and 9:20?
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
All right, let's jump down to discuss the door assessing north end of Fort Hills basement.
I think probably what we need to do is have the security people meet our team committee on that to decide. We said there needs to be some conflicting thing about that people in there, they got access going down into the boiler room. So we might have to change some locks down there and then make sure that all the mother doors are lockable where there's electronic, you're putting security equipment down there and stuff and probably have to wait, I think even to see what comes out of this whole thing. I agree that I think that access needs to be opened up down there, but we might have to meet some other criteria down there.
Yeah, that'd be the safety committee would have to make a recommendation on that.
Well, actually it's off safety and security teams.
Our security, yeah.
It's a security committee. It's formed by the.
Yeah.
Ricky got it eaten.
What, I guess I have a question I would, what purpose are you opening that?
Well, we got HR down there now, people going out down there and stuff like that.
And he still, is it that's still kind of a secure area for the employees, then you're, you're meeting with employees down there. Originally, originally this goes back to when Steve and Bill and myself and the judge, they, they wanted an area, I guess, basically, not to be able to designate that. We've made it as such so there wasn't a foot traffic, traffic type of office that was put together for it. So that was kind of the, that was kind of the history behind it, if you will. Uh, HR wasn't down there at the time. I mean, there's other areas and I don't know what, we don't know what's going to happen with the community services piece after the first of the year. Uh, but I would agree, Chris and I have both tried to kind of reconvene that security committee. And we've tried a couple of times. You even had both scheduled. I don't know if anybody showed up. I know I was out in town, but I don't think anybody even showed up for you. Uh, so we do need to reconvene that. We can have that discussion. But that was kind of the reason behind it, plus our radio room and everything that is down there.
As far as confidentiality now, everybody's got the ability to shut their doors.
What, but people should be actually making a, uh, an appointment to meet with HR. You're just not going to pop into HR because there could be somebody else already in HR. Like you're just not going to go down and arbitrarily to say, I have a problem and.
And or not there.
And have them not there.
I won't speak for, I'm here at GAS, but they do have all the offices in the county, so they might not even be there. So we just don't want people walking through. Nobody's down there. Um, but that was, that was the crutch behind the history. So it's ultimately your decision to, the board's decision, so.
Well, that outside door will still be the same as the employee entrances.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that was, that was the other thing that was talked about, going to a, a central repository or a central location. And that's what we did do on that east door. So that was another recommendation. That was, yeah, that's been underway for quite a while, so.
But I think the security team, I mean, they need to look at this and, and the thing about it is they got to come up with reasoning why it needs to stay locked.
Yep. And it might be a completely different feel now. You know, we have a different judge. We have a, almost everybody's different.
Hmm.
Almost everybody's brand new, so it's, it's time we take a look at it.
And that's. Was put in, put in place in 2017, so as any policy, it should be looked at. It's been, it's been long enough.
What even states in there about reviewing and stuff?
Hmm.
Well, our number of state teams is the same people. That's all and what their processes are. That's just, that's.
Another topic of discussion in addition to that would be opening the west entrance. Here we got all that parking out there and Better Memorial and everything else. People walk up those steps and find the doors locked.
Yeah.
I hate to cut you off, but it's 9:15. We can come back to this if you wish.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I think we're just, just, we're going to make a ruling on this. I, I just may suggest that we wait and that's security team meet. And then finish that up.
All right, let's, um, opening the bids for the land sale.
Okay, we got two parcels. The first, first parcel, we received one bid and that's parcel 150520001. It's 2.33 acres. And we received a bid from Joel Grover for a bid at 200 an acre. That's the one and only bid we received for that.
And joining, uh, landowners, all seed letters, letters were sent out to them.
I didn't, I did not send letters out. I wasn't, okay.
I did, and I sent them.
So, uh, and I'm assuming the Grovers received that same letter, didn't you?
456 dollars?
Okay, since we did not receive any other bids, I make a motion to accept that bid and get that transferred over onto public hands.
I would second that.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. All right.
And.
Do we get anything on the next parcel?
Yeah, we got two bids on the, on parcel 1129300012. And I apologize, I do not have wrote down how many acres that is.
It's like a ten.
I, I was thinking it wasn't very, very much.
Yeah.
What was that?
It's point two two.
Thank you. That's a big piece. Okay. Received a bid. I can't read the signature.
With mine.
Any name?
John Oldman.
And that bid was for $50. And then received a bid from Mike Peyton. And that bid was for $100.
Oh.
John, did you want to pay more than yours?
Absolutely.
What's your bid?
Two hundred.
Yes.
He could have it.
That makes it easy. I make a motion. We accept a bid for $200 in total.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. All we need to do is, uh, we'll get some quick claim deeds drawn up and then I'll get in touch with you and, um, change money and signatures and have it required.
We can, um, if you give me one second to go over to the office, I can have the girls write you out and receive.
I can either give a percentage to hold it or I'll see if we can get the phone out and we'll have. Josh draw up those quick claim deeds and. Give you time.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, 9:20. Public, you're going to need to open the public hearing for the essential services.
And make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
First and second, public hearing has opened. Is there anybody, any questions regarding essential services?
Um, who made the motion to open that?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't in here.
And Clayton seconded it.
Yeah.
Now a public hearing.
Walter, you have any comments? At this point.
Okay, I want somebody else to do this.
There are no comments. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close.
Second.
First and second, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve second reading.
Second reading, motion to approve made by Clayton.
Second.
Seconded by John, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, did you guys want to discuss the door anymore?
I think we need to reconvene the security team
Okay.
or committee or whatever we call it. Do an evaluation of the whole building.
Right. This dues to be done.
Well, and look over our, our policy to make sure that the employees know in the, we're evacuating where we need to go and stuff like that. I didn't know until I figured it.
I know there's one thing in that security plan that's in conflict, that conflicts with the state legislature and Governor Path.
Yeah. Carrying Benson, the court, she can carry him in the courthouse, she just can't carry him.
In the courtroom.
So we find the rest and review that. I guess I'll second that.
We need to reconvene the security team. Okay, DHS building repairs?
Later.
It's been a minute since I've gone over that stuff. Um, yes, yes. Okay, so what is happening is that doghouse in the back when we tore it off, it's just, it's block under there and the block is, the mortar in the block needs to be repaired. Um, I did not know this at the time, but it was, every time it rained, they were getting water around that back door. So that's all fixed now. Um.
And all of that damage was, he wasn't able to notice because it was partially covered with that old tin and framework.
Right.
That addition that was built on, so.
Yeah.
And it needs to be finished up and taken care of.
Yeah, we need to. He recommended trim from right beyond where the HVAC people that threw the metal to the edge of the building. It's like it's maybe about what, six feet? Exactly. Something like that. And.
Is this the individual? Is he interested in moving that or not?
He said what he would do is, um, the people that did the.
ELC.
The ELC, yeah. He, that needed a really good job and he would recommend them.
That's the ELC scene we would do.
Yeah.
Dutch Brothers.
Dutch Brothers, yeah.
Yes. And I mean, it's not. I guess this is roughly nine, nine inch step. Oh yeah, and then the step needs to be, um, a concrete pad for it and set that setup step on it and railing.
Is rod and aid away.
It's riding away and like it's, it's barely attached on a, don't. So that, and I'm assuming.
Really necessary anymore?
That's, that's an egress, so.
Yeah, and if, if somebody goes out that door, they lean on the railing, they're just going to go down.
And it's still, it's still going to meet this, the requirements. And I, I think instead of having, as soon as you come out of a door, have an initial right away step down, I think that that platform, everything needs to be moved up. So they're coming right out of the platform and not having to take a step right as soon as the door opens.
Right.
But I, I know that the guy that does the tin work is not going to do the concrete, he doesn't do concrete.
Yeah, I can probably get, um.
Does that gear blocks need to be remortared? You have to have somebody come in to do that. Tuck point.
Different input.
I don't know if it's stable and the stuff and it's concealed. I, I don't know if it needs to be. If that area is bad, how much more of the wall needs to be remortared and everything is all been covered up and with the new tin siding.
Do you think it'd be okay once we cover it or?
He said he'd recommend either tuck point and use joints or using a concrete slash mirror adhesive to rebond the block together. Could the Dutch brothers do that when they're pinning it?
Well, he doesn't do it. They're strictly roopers tenders. Probably it would be the best if we, so we don't have to involve three different people, is get somebody to do the concrete work and then also can do the joints at the same time. I think we need to do some research, find somebody that does the whole thing.
He's provided estimate cost or not.
No, he wouldn't have that for the you know, what you're going to want to do that kind, the, the, um, if you're going to pour a concrete slab there, it's not a very big slab. So you wouldn't want to get a contractor here in town that's already doing something else. So they just, because otherwise it has to happen during a concrete, it's going to cost you as much as three yards. Those targets for small load charge and that's huge.
Hmm.
And he also did have an idea, um, because they have, they're still upset they don't have a place to for water or a place for a microwave. So he did recommend like that first, because there's two bathrooms and they don't need the full bathrooms. Said the first bathroom, you can just take his, and just take that sink out, put, um, like a kitchen sink cabinet, kitchen cabinet in along that wall. Anchor toilet, put something over top of that. So you don't, so if you ever need to go back and put another toilet there, you can like a piece of tin or whatever. And then I'll put, uh, cupboards along the other wall and there's a plug-in right there and outlet right there for a microwave. That way they would have cupboards down below and we would have a kitchen sink to throw out their water bottles.
So those two bathrooms, one, one is not designated as an employee and one's for clients, correct?
Nope, they're not designated for you going.
Designated, and they're, they'd be more inclined to agree to one restroom?
Shelley wasn't static with that. And we can't, right now we're renting an office space that doesn't have a break room. It's kind of hard if, if, if for some reason the state said you guys don't have to find a place for DHS anymore and they moved on, it's going to be hard to rent that out to the next person without some sort of a break room or a place, a kitchenette.
Well, we're renting, it's not going to be big enough for a break room.
No, it's.
One or two chairs in there.
More like a kitchenette.
Yeah. Well, we're going to get, we're going to need to get cost skippers on that too. Maybe that's something that needs to be figured into the general services budget because fucking dollars here. Every time you get monkey and all cabinets and plumbing and there might be some electrical work done. Why that GFI circus put in there?
Sorry, GFI. Yeah, it's GFI. Like you just have to throw the cupboards in there and they say it should, it would be an easy convert.
Yeah, need to get some.
They're pretty cheap anyways. You know.
Yeah, we didn't keep the one we took out of the food pantry.
We reused it in the food pantry.
So are we going to look at getting this, uh, concrete work done, the steel work done, phase fill in in this year's budget?
I mean, this current year's budget?
Yeah.
I'm not sure where you're going to find the money.
That's it. I mean, we're, even though it looks like a small job, but it's going to be big dollars.
Well, by the time that you find somebody that's able to do the concrete work and tuck point to mortar and, you know, concrete sweet season gets here and stuff like that, that's a small job. They're going to have to work it in and probably be effort. tuck point to mortar and, you know, concrete sweet season gets here and stuff like that, that's a small job, they're gonna have to work it in, it'll probably be effort. So I think we'd work that in anyway.
Yeah. And the thing about it, it's, 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 it's all sealed now, so looks like you did a real good job of sealing that new door and everything, and getting everything caulked up, so we don't have to worry about water and moisture getting in, in the work, it's just a matter of finishing it up.
Right. I guess, I was thinking that whole thing would be um, next fiscal year, like the work would be done in probably July.
Yeah.
That would be my wall.
And the same with doing, then you would get some.
Get some quotes for.
A break, uh, restroom, you know, eight dollar.
Start all that this spring and hopefully get the work lined up, so it could fall into next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a direction moving forward with that, I don't think there's any motion there. IT Director Regarding Contract With Access Systems.
Jason sent us a couple of emails on some of this, and I have.
Yeah.
It'd be printed out a little easier for us to read. Thank you, sir.
I was using most of this, yes. There's a lot there. Alright, so I reached out to every department head during kind of a yearly evaluation on hardware, see where they're at with their printers, as well as if they'd be on board with consolidating into a single contract to cover everybody. Uh, Public Health was wanting to back out since our last meeting because of grants that pays for everything, that's fine. Community Services backed out because of the changing environment of everything. Uh, and I believe the Attorney's Office wanted more numbers on it.
Yep, so Jason and I set down me.
Yep, discussed it. Uh, so the numbers changed since the last meeting, and I have a few folks about that. Uh, if you go to the email that talks about, the one I forwarded all you folks with the numbers on it, uh, that shows that cost per month will go to approximately twenty-two, fourteen a month for the first six months, and then after that six months, it goes up to twenty-two eighty. Uh, so we had the, some of the machines taken out because of the different departments come out. We had an additional machine added. Uh, there is discussion of one of the existing machines, although it isn't that old, it's still fairly slow to what the employee, area employees in that department wanted, so that was added into this. Uh, so the numbers changed just slightly. And when I asked Nathan, the salesperson, to get me what should be budgeted uh, for next fiscal, which is what I put into my fiscal numbers, uh, he said approximately twenty-seven thousand.
For the annual?
For the annual, now it does increase three percent each year. And he did make mention of that, and I also confirmed with him that at the end of this five-year contract, we own all the machines outright. So, that's all included into this. What this contract does not account for is if someone prints a hundred thousand printouts on a, a machine, that's going to just destroy our contract, because we're only supposed to hit a certain number. To fall within that number, then we pay overage fees. And it's listed out what we would pay, you know, for black and white, depending on the machine, could be just a hair under half a penny per page, for color, it'd be just a hair over three cents a page, so. The Attorney's Office right now, from what I've been informed, they've used up most of their funds, the goal of this entire thing is reduce the overall cost accounting. Uh, put it all under one vendor. Uh, get toner immediately when we need it, so part of this is they'll be monitoring machine supplies, not what we're printing, just what the supply status is, so they can order up the toner as soon as they think we need it. Uh, the maintenance is covered under this, so anytime a part goes out, that's all covered, they'll come on site, they'll fix it. Uh, we had a part go out in the Attorney's Office on one of their side machines, that was six hundred dollars. And for the repairs and the parts or anything else, that would be covered.
Five-year maintenance agreement?
Yes, this would be a five-year maintenance agreement, which covers the toner as well.
If the parts are cost prohibitive or not available, they replace the machine then?
That I didn't ask.
I think I'd ask.
Okay, from what it sounds like, the, the reason why some of these machines are being replaced, uh, that spreadsheet that I sent folks, some of them are highlighted, those are the ones I would, they're wanting us to replace because the parts aren't available for the machines, for the handful that we have now, so this would lock in that for five years. So it's my assumption that those parts would be available for at least five years, but I can confirm with Nathan, the sales rep.
What's the life expectancy? You said that after five years, they would become our equipment. But now, I care about all this electronic equipment, it's only good for three to five years, it's gotta be replaced, anything that becomes obsolete and.
Yeah, it depends on what we're talking about, uh, for the really large copiers and printers, traditionally, they're good for about ten years. All comes down to parts availability, now we have some Lexmark printers scattered throughout, and with the government climate, you know, federal government banning imports from China from that company, those machines are impossible to get parts and toner for, even if they're a year old. So we're at the mercy of the, the global market in those cases.
But this kind of ties into what John's question was.
Yeah, how can we confirm that they're, they're good for the five years?
Right.
That just comes down to the contract. Yeah, as, as far as they will be fully contract responsible for the hardware, the maintenance, the repairs, everything.
Make sure that wording covers that, and then we have to make sure of.
I can do that, yeah.
Jason, when I was going through your spreadsheet, I noticed that the assessor's office isn't on there, they.
The assessor has one machine, uh.
Or did I miss it?
Uh, they were on there. You're right, I don't see the assessor on there. And Brad was on board with consolidating.
Another question I have on this, it's, it's been brought up multiple times in my tenure.
Yes.
How we keep an accurate tab on what it costs to operate each individual.
Yeah.
So, we're throwing all this underneath, how can we get an accurate analysis of what? One prime example would be conservation, they, and they, they operate on an entirely different board up there and everything like that, and so for are we pulling that cost away from them, then they don't, then that conservation board don't have to worry about that cost under budget anymore?
Yes.
So we're not getting an accurate reading of what, of what each department is.
If we need the, if we need those numbers, we could pull a generic number, so if we're paying the, I'm just gonna round down, so it's twenty-two hundred dollars a month for the entire contract, and we have to know the numbers for Fontana Parks. We could go into, uh, the print counts, so we're allowed to fifteen thousand prints, if they're using five thousand prints of that contract, which would be a third, you could say they're using, utilizing a third of that monthly cost. That would be fairly straightforward.
I mean, I'm not opposed to this, the biggest thing that things that sound good to me is that we're lowering costs here, and we're getting better service and.
From, correct, from the numbers that I had pulled, um, for fiscal, well, the fiscal we're in right now, I pulled the numbers this morning, we're at thirteen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and two cents for toner, maintenance, and machine repairs. Uh, previous fiscal, we were at thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and forty-four cents, previous to that was thirty-four thousand, six eighty-nine, seventy-eight. Those numbers were pulled from the companies of Access Systems, Koch Brothers, Offistown, and TMA Laser Group. Uh, there might be one or two out there that I'm not aware of, but those are the main ones, at least I do toner ordering through.
So the maximum difference here for that one fiscal year would be about ten grand, wasn't it?
Approximately, yes. Uh, but again, that doesn't account for overage fees. So, a healthy estimate would be, we would be potentially saving the county between five to ten thousand a year. You know, there is that variable involved that I can't account for, but the idea behind this is that all of these machines would be under a shared contract or shared print count. So even your machine, let's say it's at a thousand prints a month that you're allotted, instead, everyone would be under, say fifteen thousand prints. So if you go, only two hundred prints, they give us eight hundred buffer, somebody else that might have gone over, and saves us those costs.
And that helps with what we're talking about here in the Attorney's Office.
Absolutely.
And historically, his office uses.
It's crazy, yeah, that's crazy.
And I just, I'm concerned if we got enough print count to cover all the departments and him.
Mm-hmm.
I'm kind of concerned about that too, so like, when he did the new, new print counts, did he keep the print counts the same?
He did an evaluation on the print counts on every machine since their installation, and then put it all together to see where he projected it going.
So he took money, he took prints away from what I would normally do, because he did print counts on them, and then averaged it out, so then we're really not getting any more print counts, this is what we need.
Well, if you were at, I was gonna make numbers up, let's say a hundred a month, and Chris's department was at hundred a month, everyone was at a hundred a month, but three quarters of those departments only printed twenty pages. All that excess could roll over to, let's say, the Attorney's Office to cover if they just went above and beyond that month.
I understand that, but did, when he did the new print counts, did he take previous print counts away from us? Did he reduce the number of print counts that he previously had anticipated for in that previous contract, and take that number away because we weren't printing as much, so then we're not gonna get what our end goal is? Am I saying that?
No, I can see, look, Jason, he's not reading what you're saying.
Are you saying that if you're contracted to a hundred, but you're only printing fifty, that he just reevaluated as fifty as your main thing?
Jason, if you don't mind me interjecting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I think the point of the matter is like, did the county attorney give you average counts, or did he give you maximum counts, because not to pick on Chris, but different times of year, she's gonna have a higher.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so those months, to be able to incorporate those, those peak months for those individuals, uh, county attorneys, attorneys at the federal, um, they tend to get those spikes.
Yes, yes, I believe the way he calculated it was the date of installation of the machine. The new machine up there isn't that old, I guess three or four years. From the date of installation to the total print count divided by those months to get the average, and they did that for every machine.
And, and so putting a probability in there as well, from those peaks, so, you know, eighty-five percent probability that on the peak for every, every office in that particular one, something of the sort. And did we take those, um, considerations into account with those contracts, or how did you put those?
Uh, he came up with a, a number based off of that averages that I said, and then I told him to increase it another two thousand pages.
Okay, so you did an analytical approach to it.
Yes, yeah, and then just add that little bit of a buffer just in case.
No, what, what print was it, did he ask for a machine before, or did he have it?
Uh, I believe it's in that spreadsheet. He pulled the meter, well, some of the numbers are there, maybe if we use your copier, I believe, or supervisors, you were printing uh, five hundred and two a month on average in seven hundred and sixty-two color.
So did he? Was, okay, let me back up.
Yeah, so if you look at this page.
Um, but, okay, so did we have, was our previous contract with him prior to this, does he have our contract now?
Yeah.
I tested him, okay.
Yeah, stickers on the front.
Okay, so when the contract that we're running under now, does that have a print count on it?
Yes.
Okay, the contract that, the new contract, did that decrease that print count at all from the first contract to now? Because if he decreased print counts on me, I'm not gonna be able to have my overage, then turn around and help the Attorney's Office, so what he's doing is he's actually decreasing print counts on people that aren't printing, and the whole, the whole goal is to get Sean more.
Well, it acts as a buffer, so on the high peak.
I don't trust those, I'm sorry.
Okay, on the high peak of the Attorney's Office, let's say some major case is going on and they go through the roof,
Mm-hmm.
we can absorb any of the departments that weren't printing that much towards that endgame, or end goal contract, but if the Attorney's Office goes lower, potentially, or any other office that goes lower than what they anticipated, even the Attorney's Office, the over from that could go to someone else during, let's say, an election that went over.
Is this evaluated, how often is this evaluated, the print, number of prints monthly, or?
Uh, we pay a monthly con, or a monthly bill, and then it gets uh, I believe looked at quarterly to make sure we're at where we're supposed to be at. And I think, uh, Utter's Office has that, Sean has that. Uh, a couple others have that, but that's how they get their, uh, if you went way above and beyond your contract, that's when they're gonna get paid for it, is quarterly.
And what happens with the existing equipment? If we go with this contract, is it will stay in place and they replace as needed, or?
Uh, the contract has, uh, one, two, three. Approximately ten new machines that would come in place, but all the remaining machines would stay. And like, that comes down to availability of parts.
Okay, then they stay in place, so in that five-year period, if one crashes.
They're responsible for the repairs or replacement of it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, since it puts all the machines under this maintenance contract, they'd be the ones that would have to take care of it.
I think, you know, if we ever did want to get across by department, you know what's your total print usage, and you've got the individual print usage, you could.
Basic math, you can figure it out, yeah.
Math.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think that's a huge obstacle. I just wanna make sure that we're, our goal of saving money and getting more print capacity for the Attorney's Office is.
I just wanna make sure that we're not in violation of anything that the, the department management or anybody, anybody would have to say about keeping urban cost figures for each individual department.
Oh, and we don't break it down by internet usage, uh, we don't break it down by water usage for the different departments. This is just one of those, uh, IT
if you can.
related components.
And it's no different than your box stores doing buying power. You know, using all the resources to get them.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that's what recruitment does, where you, where you basically pull funds from each budget from each, uh, department every month, or what's, who is in manage that process, like what's the?
My intent, I have a line item for computer supplies or IT supplies, essentially, that's traditionally been exclusively used for toner. And right now it's at about fifteen thousand budget per year, I would increase that to the twenty-seven thousand for next fiscal to cover this contract, and then the different departments can then eliminate that from their line items.
No, I'm not convinced that that's, um, uh, the, the best way to go at this point, because, uh, some of the grants and things like that, they also include overhead. Uh, so we may have to figure out a way to, to build those for those different departments, maybe asking the different, uh, office directors, uh, what their requirements are.
Hmm, and that's why Public Health backed out, they do, yeah, they do, they go by grants, yeah. And I can check.
Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
Is this offer, how long is this offer, basically? Is that a deadline, and they want a yay or nay?
I'm sure they'd like it as soon as possible, they have nothing in the writing, as far as duration, I've been working on this for three or four months.
I just would like to know what, overall what our print allowance was prior to this and what it's going to.
For the board?
No, for everybody, everybody. Yeah.
That's the one, patient can create a pool.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'd like to have a consideration.
Yes, yeah.
So what's your best guess estimate on our savings as a county in this program?
Uh, I would, best guess is between five to ten thousand a year. But again, that, that factors in the potential, and I've met with Sean before in the Attorney's Office saying, hey, is there any other solution we can come up with instead of printing so much, use iPads. Those are paid for themselves in a year based on how much he's paying for toner and everything.
Well, I know they have to produce
paper.
some things in paper.
Yep, and that was his. Yep, and that was his logic to it too, that he preferred paper. Uh, and I asked, can we pass some of these costs on to the people who are receiving these copies? And this just seems ridiculous, the county has to keep paying for this all the time and, as we can. So.
Bottom line is, it's just not a matter of upfront savings at five to ten that you're talking about, it's making. Make sure we got more reliable machines, we can get it repaired and, and stuff like.
Yeah, getting the toner as soon as we needed, instead of potentially waiting a week or two for it to come in. Now, especially when elections are taking place, it's critical we have the toner available for the Otter's office when they need it.
Well, was it a year ago, we went for how many months waiting for toner? Because you couldn't get it supplied.
That was one of the, the Micker toner for the, the check printer in the Otter's office, we couldn't find it anywhere, no one had it.
It was without pay for highways too. More supply of G issues.
Yeah, the windows for the E O C. Months on that, but, yep. All right, let me get uh, more information on this, I will pass it on to the board and then we can potentially reconvene again and discuss it further.
Appreciate you digging into it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, we're both. So during our previous meeting, I know we discussed. That we currently haven't broken down, that we have three of us, being myself, Brian. And Brad down in the assessor's office paying for Eagle View. And then it came up that we also have other users. Amber, how's it going? Hey. Who are in on using it, cause it's our base map for our G I S, so. All of our apps that we use on our phones, dispatch systems, stuff like that. Is utilizing it in the background, so. Currently. At the, uh, thanks to Keith, I did chase down some leads on possibly procuring funding for it. Which took me to the D O T and they were out and, but he said that I could try Pat Brown, who's under the Secretary of State's office. And Pat are on a pretty good basis, so I've called Pat up. Pat said, not so much, but that he is working on a statewide building footprint layer. Which is awesome, cause we were gonna pay ten grand for that, so we're no longer paying ten grand for that, we're just gonna wait for the state. And he said I should try Blake Derucci through uh, surcharge. So I called up Blake and Blake said that this is a one hundred percent acceptable thing to use surcharge for, otherwise known as my part of the G I S grant. So I might be able to take a chunk of it out using my G I S grant.
That currently has a lot of money in it, right?
No, he's talking, his G I S grant doesn't have a lot of money in it.
Well, it's been stacking, it's at twelve grand a year since twenty eighteen minus seventeen for my drone program. So, there's, there's a fair amount of ca- cash in there, yeah.
It all goes into the general fund, it's not a carryover.
That's supposed to be a one guy, okay.
It's not, it's never been tracked separate, I mean, when you deposit it, yes, it has a separate line item. But that goes into the general fund, so if he was going to do a big project with it, it still has to be in the budget. Does that make sense?
But then does he get to use revenues on the revenue side, it's gone into the, into the uh, general fund for?
It's going on seven years.
So what's the, I mean, with the grant stipulations, is it? Once you get it, you're supposed to use it that current year? I, I don't have any idea, this.
I wanna see, where do you three something? Um, I did read it, it said that uh, it is supposed to carry over every year. And basically it's there until you use it.
I almost wonder if initially should have been placed into a separate fund instead of the general fund.
Exactly. Cause if once it gets put into the general fund, it's hard to go the other way.
Listen, this is not the same that it's the nine-one-one.
Surcharge?
Yeah.
It's two sides of the same coin oddly enough, so the nine-one-one grant is surcharge money, but allocated specifically to a G I S department. So me and Blake got into that for a little bit, uh, last week at some point.
I have code thirty-four A maybe?
That sounds right, not forty-three, thirty-four.
Yeah, Chris just popped something in, but I have a code thirty-four A, tells me absolutely nothing right now. I don't know what that means.
That's a code that indicates your nine-one-one.
Yeah, legal, or uh, it's a lot of legalese, but my takeaway was that it should roll over each individual year until spent. And basically. Outlines what we're allowed to do with it. So, also we have to allocate it kind of based on use, so we at minimum need to match it. But given how many of us are putting money into it, it's no big deal to match it, it's pretty simple.
And how much is that for again?
Twelve thousand a year.
Okay, I was thinking ten, thank you.
Twelve thousand per piece app, so if it gets lucky too. As long as our data meets uh, homeland security guidelines, which we have every year.
I mean, I can try and run some financial reports over the last seven years. Hot regarding this revenue and this expenditure and see what we come up with.
See how much was transferred in there altogether?
Yeah, I mean, cause it all went into the general fund and. So if it's something that he can, a revenue he can carry over, I almost wonder if we need to track it a different way.
Probably, and if some, if it's something they're gonna come back and say, we wanna know how you spent it. Do that, Keith, you have something?
Yeah, do you, what's that resolution, what's that, how resolution you want under?
About present resolution, right, so we're six in the county, three in the cities. And the theory would be we would go to three. Personally, I don't have that much of an upgrade with going to three throughout. Um, Brad down in the assessor's office would like to go to three. Uh, Amber and Brian are kind of the two deciding votes.
Well, in my case, we don't use it, we just get a bill. And, and the honest answer is I do use it, but Alex doesn't, nobody else does. And what they do is they just go to Google Earth, and I could do pretty much the same thing off of Google Earth too.
Essentially speaking, Google Earth is more of an educated guess, whereas our data's a bit more into it.
More accurate, and gives more abilities too.
Cause it's an oblique image as opposed to a ninety-degree screen.
Have not been taught how to use it, I mean, I don't even know what to, I don't even know the program.
It goes back a long.
Why their, Alex isn't using it, cause he, does he know it's available?
So is Alex not, is Alex concerned about the accuracy? When he gets down to the accuracy, goes measured field is what generally there.
Yeah, that's, that's typically how I look at it too. So when was the last time you did these resolutions? I mean, how?
That would, it's in a three-year stint, so that would have been the winter slash fall of twenty-three.
It's not necessarily accuracy as, as in placement, but it's resolution as far as the clarity, how, how in focus it is when you zoom in. So can you see it at the hundred-foot level or can you see it at the fifteen-foot level?
In this case, it's kind of both, because we actually, uh, through their interface, we overlay all of our other data. So you also have address points, parcel lines, um, gas lines, all that stuff is imposed on top of it. So you can take a look at it and because it's an oblique image, you also get a three-dimensional view. So it's, it's pretty, as far as being like, oh, the gas line goes right to this house, not right there, so.
So do we gain anything by having that higher resolution? Can we go to something cheaper or were cheaper options even available?
Cheaper options are available as far as we run the ability to go to cities and be like, okay, nothing's changed in Lamont. X number of years, we could drop them to like nine. But then that gets into the weeds, cause then you have uh, Brad who's partially funded via the cities. And when the cities think they're getting hosed, it gets uh, weedy.
And Alex does go to the assessor's website to pull up information. So he's maybe coming into the same information from a different direction.
It's kind of nice to be able to zoom in until somebody got in the building too.
That is, especially once that building footprint layer arrives, where we can literally take the old one, subtract and find all the new stuff between it.
Well, that's gonna be very beneficial for the accessory down, so, office.
Yeah, uh, he's not sure when, he says that it's getting the ball rolling now though, so. Hopefully in the next couple of years, but to save ten grand, I think it's worth a little. On the, the public layer made by the Secretary of State's office.
He might hold your breath long, that's the longer you turn into a smurf on that one.
Usually, usually Pat's pretty good about, oh, pretty much everything, Pat's really good at his job, so. If he says it's gonna happen, it's probably gonna happen.
So what do we need to do about this Eagle View?
Well, looks like it's kind of a, kind of a toss-up, Amber, thoughts?
As far as splitting it three ways?
Um, actually, I was thinking on resolution. Um, does the three and six meet your uh, requirements or would you like it to be a little bit clearer? Alright, then I think we stick where we are at eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars per. Minus, once we figure out the stuff for the grant, so we can take a chunk. And I know we also discussed breaking it out further for tracking, cause. I know that's partially why uh, he got invited was, we're gonna give you some more bills. Awesome, so, uh, thoughts?
Forty-three thousand.
That's the uh, proposed budget or proposed cost, it's actually thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Currently divided three ways for eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
The proposed one would be fourteen.
Uh, proposed one would be fourteen.
We might actually be able to, but this is not in any of your documents.
So if.
So the grant funds could reduce that.
Further, yes. Yeah, according to Blake, it's uh, an entirely acceptable thing that a lot of counties do, so, like, oh. You know, if, if it's chilling there, I just won't grab it.
What are we looking at the timeframe when, uh, this would be isolated, I mean?
Uh, this particular uh, quote's good until eleven twenty-five of, what's the date? Uh, expiration date's four fifteen of twenty-five, so we got several months, but. Um, as far as changing up the payment, that would just be an internal structural thing, not something that we would negotiate with the people at the contract.
I think the people need another figure for that.
Budget spread, timing is fantastic.
This ties in a lot with our nine-one-one system, right?
It does.
Hey, they still have a problem trying to figure out why we can't take money from that nine-one-one fund.
And looking at the, there's not, that's not like an un. There's only a certain amount of money that goes into that every year and that, those funds are used to update our generators, our generators going. And for our communication systems, and right now we have um, five of that generators. We have one that's nickel and dimming us to death. So, and then there's some, it also does dispatch stations and stuff like that.
I assume Chris here is probably typing something right now.
I just thought we had a huge balance in that one, we were looking at the E O C shortfall. But maybe I'm looking at.
We couldn't use surcharge funds on the E O C.
I know, but I said we could maybe on this.
According to. Brought up that surcharge does pay for that, but I would need Chris's insight in order to put, or push through it further, we could get on another.
I think it's just worth looking into. As strapped as the general fund is right now.
He comes through with this grant, then we wouldn't even need to worry about it, because the grant offered the last, how many years it would pay for it? Twelve thousand a year.
Yes, but remember that twelve thousand has just been plunked into the general fund, because when. Cause when he started getting this grant, and, and I could be wrong, and I'll probably reach out to Elizabeth just to verify. But means it's such a specific criteria and it can be carryover funds, it truly needs to go into a different fund, a fund of its own. Because not all funds are carryover.
Thirty-four A did state that it would, so yeah, seems like probably it's new uh, or different account.
There are other uh, grants or funds or anything that you can think of right offhand that would fall on the same boat?
Not particularly, no.
Seems like something we should ask most of the different office directors.
At least with uh, with this, the nine-one-one G I S grants has been a recurring thing for pretty much ever. As long as you meet certain criteria from homeland security, you get twelve grand per piece app. So, yeah, for six years I've been collecting and utilized it for, like my mapping drone, by the way. Let's say we have a big flood, like you've seen it, uh, we'll fly a drone over. And I can actually construct a base map and intersect that with all the parcel information, I can tell you who lives there. What the assessed value of their house is, what their mailing address is, depending on if they're in the alley, I can get their phone number. So it's, it's been pretty good to have at times, but uh.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, as far as other grants go, I mean, I'm unfamiliar with any others that the state's currently operating.
Yeah, probably ask around, maybe there's somebody else on the same boat.
Nine-one-one just typed in, he said he would be glad to pay for a part, don't I pay for some mapping already?
Um, you pay for dispatch map for the uh, uh, the uh, dispatcher, so GeoCom contract. Um, you pay for part of ArcMap, which is actually gonna be reduced. As soon as we, uh, as soon as I talk to our sales rep, which is supposed to be today. And I think those are the two.
Okay, I have a quick question, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So initially the um, quote that Evan got was for forty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and some odd change. For, and that's for an upgrade.
Yep, that's the upgrade.
Okay.
The current stuff is what we're currently paying for.
It's the thirty-five, one eighty-one. Okay, so, these departments have been paying for this all along. If you stick with the current. Plus the grant, it's gonna reduce that department's line item or that expense. Or if you go with the upgrade, it's only an eighty-five hundred dollar difference throwing the grant in. Ultimately, it's not gonna increase the cost of the departments, am I figuring this correctly?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, so you know, trying to call somebody in, I'm paying for stuff, ultimately with the grant. It's not gonna be an increase to the county if they go with the upper level.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I was understanding that correctly, because there was a lot of circling go around that I wasn't following.
Most of the users are kind of ant about it, so it's kind of looking more like we could just eat more costs and reduce the budget.
Well, they currently have the higher resolution.
Coming in?
They currently have a higher resolution.
Uh, twenty-twenty had the higher resolution, twenty-twenty-three is a return, or a return to force, so it's the same as we've been before. Twenty-twenty was kind of a, a bizarre year thanks to COVID, all the pilots got sick.
They're not used to the higher resolution right now, so you're not taking anything, you, that's when people noticed it, we were used to, to something.
Right, that was, twenty-twenty was the higher resolution because we got a deal. Cause all the pilots got sick, so they delayed our flight but gave us higher resolution to compensate. That's why it's the ones, or the one year where we have all the leaves on the trees. And it's green, we can't make out buildings as well, all the other ones are always a fall flight, there's no leaves, you can see all the buildings, you can see everything.
Alright, so you know which way to go then?
If we're going to stay as it is, we're going to speak with Chris regarding possibly. Uh, getting some funding from surcharge.
For sure, for surcharge, if we're gonna stay the way it is and you have the grant.
Cause then ultimately, it's still where you will reduce the expense for the department with the departments with that grant.
That, I, no one, it's in surcharge and what potentially coming up, picking at the gun, scares.
Okay, so just hang as it is, keep us, keep it with the three and then utilize my grant when possible. Sounds good. Thanks, Amber, not a problem.
Next up, I believe we have a.
Um, can we have a motion for all of that? What he just said? What has gotta be documented?
So I what we need a motion for is we're going to stay with what we currently have. It's divided three ways by roads.
Uh G I S.
G I S.
And those G I S and and um.
And the assessment office. Um, are we throwing Amber into that also?
Um, we haven't decided that at the moment.
Okay, so that's.
The current three departments.
Three departments. And we're going with the.
We could subdivide it by four, I guess. I mean.
Evan, don't confuse the issue.
Okay.
We'll be here, it'll be very circular, it'll be here the rest of the day.
And we're already ten minutes past our exempt session.
Yeah. And we're gonna go with the six, is it six inch resolution?
Uh, six inch in the county, three inch in the cities.
Six inch in the county, three inch in the city, there you go. Can you motion for that?
And apply the grant.
And apply the grant.
Thank you.
You got it on them?
I had it before, I just wanted it in a month.
I'll make a motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Excellent.
Thank you for your work there.
And I will see you guys again.
Yeah, let's see. We have a ten each hour, we need to go into pivotal session.
Exam session.
Exam session, pardon.
No, that's alright, I can make sure.
Iowa code twenty point one seven three. Or phone callers, Renee.
Yeah.
Do with the phone?
Make some motion.
And. On paper?
Alright.
Not for the exam session. But if you wanna hang, it won't take very long, you can come back down later.
Yeah.
Do you wanna give her a call?
You're gonna ask, we don't want us to.
Yeah.
My number?
Ten minutes to find it.
Chris, Ashley, Evan. Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one? Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be. Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
Closed and when they open it back up then it'll be.
Chris.
Ashley.
Evan.
Recording has started and myself, but so it must still be in there.
Closed one?
We went through every line item and then they approved it. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, well, I brought Amy. This obviously is my first year doing it, so we have.
Don't be sneaky. I'm just like, this brings me back to my interview. I'm like, oh my God.
Yeah, we worked on it a lot. And like I said, we did sit down with our board of health and we went through every line item. And then, yes, they approved it in November. So with our wages, we are, the salaries that we have listed really align with other local health departments similar in our size. These are based on the fiscal year twenty-three wage scale. I just got an email this week that the twenty-four wage scale is not ready yet. So we submit, actually, this should add us submit. A questionnaire and then they were gonna fill it out and get it back to us. So.
This kind of ties in with the wages and stuff like that. Apparently you don't anticipate, you don't see much overtime in your department.
No, no, no. Typically, overtime is, we do comp time. And we encourage the two hourly staff as who can earn overtime. We encourage them to use their time, that comp time before the end of the year. How we have our grants and everything, we just, we just have this understanding that if you earn comp time, you have to have it gone. Anything earned prior to June first has to be gone by June thirtieth. And if you're in June, you can carry it forward, but we, we really try hard not to have comp time. We try not to have.
That carryover.
That carryover and try to be as fiscally responsible as we can because.
That's, that's.
That's just what we were. That's what I was told we did back in two thousand and twelve. I've been doing it.
We, yeah, we have.
Well, that's good. Very good. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, but we do have five hundred dollars in there. Is a cushion. So if something did happen and we had to, we could. When we were in the middle of COVID, we had a paramedic who was also a county employee. And his line was, whenever he worked for us, it was paid out of that overtime line. But it was also reimbursed by the COVID funding grant that we had. So the most responsible that we had at that time. And we've not utilized him now for, we, since two thousand twenty-two, we stopped utilizing him. So we've reduced that down to five hundred because last year we didn't use any. Right?
Yep.
I don't think we used any. So. That is, that's what we did with wages. That's what we did with, and trying to keep it.
We consistent.
Consistent and positive. We, our wages probably fall in the lower, mid to lower, closer to the lower end of the, of counties ourselves.
Okay.
And you're mostly funded through grants.
We are mostly funded through grants. Last year, we used one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of taxes. And our expenses was, one, one million seven thousand. And we only used one hundred and sixty-seven thousand of taxes. So we, we did pretty good. You wanna go to expenses then, Dom? Where do you wanna? I like, I only sat in last year. I don't know how you guys do your process. So I don't want.
They, they look at the wages, they look at the expenses, go through by line. If there's any something major, then.
Then speak up.
Yep, and then hit the revenues.
Okay, so.
Always make sure that your reestimate is gonna meet your needs.
Okay, yep. So our reestimate, we need to do a budget amendment. And that is because we're receiving additional grant dollars. We're looking at getting two hundred and seventy thousand more in through that FEP grant. And then we have an increase of expenditures. We have, staff changes, and so benefits changed. One of those benefits is fully covered by the FEP grant. So that's no tax dollars. And then the other benefit, fifty percent of it was covered by it, but fifteen thousand of it will be tax dollars. But we do need to do a total. We have to do a budget amendment, I believe. Right?
Just looking at the sheet, yes.
Yeah.
On the expense line.
Yeah.
Benside.
Amy, are you going through all their caps for IPRs and health insurance and stuff like that? Who's actually validating these departments themselves or?
On their wage sheet that they do, the FICA and IPRs is, I mean, we update the rates if it changes from year to year, but it is automatically figured in there.
Automatically calculated.
Health insurance? We don't have access to who has what kind of coverage, so that I can't do. That'd be an HR thing.
HR. Scratch sheet. And we updated our numbers with that cost. For four, we have four staffs, so four staff on health insurance, four on dental, the Flex, the Voya, and life insurance. We updated those as well. Something that I'm sure Clayton will notice is our increase in our reestimate of twenty twenty-five under office supplies. It went up to eighteen thousand five hundred and sixty from three thousand three hundred. That is where our, it's an increase due to the staff with retraining kits, training supplies for staff with leads, CPR, and those are all funded by the FEP grant or that big emergency preparedness grant. And then we had some additional expenses through the bridges and high path agent grant, which is our multi-year response grant. We have bridges funding and high path avian flu funding come through. So we, you may have seen the coffee sleeves around town that we purchased with those funds. It's to increase awareness, to get people to get their flu vaccine and prevention.
Adult vaccines.
Consistent on what you budget, pretty consistent that it does go over every year.
Yeah. It does.
I see that we got the new machine outside.
Yes. That is substance abuse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are opioid points.
Yep.
Yes, we're excited about that.
Let me see what I pulled up.
Yes. Would you recommend Clayton or would you want to recommend that I change that?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, does that cause any complications where maybe we, means it's consistent with going over? Do we need to break it from that thirty-three hundred?
They consistently go over because they. They have grants coming. So usually every year, it's nothing for them to have to do a budget amendment where they're amending their expenses and amending their revenues because more grants, more expenses, and so that basically balances out the bottom line.
Yeah, it's just gonna be hard to know what to put that number at because it's, 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 it's a roller coaster.
Well, you don't like a kind of grant that you haven't got yet either because you're not.
Mm-hmm. And this, the high path is this avian flu with dairy farmers, and I don't anticipate that happening next year, but it was just, apply for this. There's funds available. If you wanna apply, we applied.
Well, we can move that around any place. We could probably put it at five and be safe, you know, but.
Yeah.
What, what advantage does that do by moving it up to that? Because there's more value to it.
And if we don't know that we're gonna receive the funding, I don't wanna budget the expense and then not have the funding to be there.
I agree.
I try to budget closer to my revenues.
Okay.
I, I'm, okay. I was thinking Chris would say, hey, Amy, you need to change this.
Your official publications and legal notices, you have a significant increase this year, but you're not really.
We had to, we hired two staff. First, we, we advertised for three positions this fiscal year.
Sure.
So that's why.
That, that was the reason. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do you want me to go in order or is it questions based on?
I mean, I guess.
Okay, I have notes about everything.
That's a go-by order.
I mean, and there's really just, I guess, regulations, first person, but there's really nothing we can do with this grant or with this budget except for either. I, I can't officially tell you to move a line item or to change a line item because it's done by, it's set by a different board.
Should we go back up to? We did salary, part-time overtime, our computer equipment, we budgeted no change. Our minor equipment, I think kind of the same, slight, slight, yeah, just a little decrease. We use that for calibrating our, units for fuel. This went up a little bit. It's having our new grant coordinator and now more meetings are back in person. So that position does the association meetings as long as other meetings. So we're gonna bring up the county car. We don't, we don't utilize it. It sits there most of the time. I mean, I, me and Jackie took it once in July. I took it once in August. The, it's more suitable for someone of my height and Dan is significantly taller than me. So I just, we're, we don't know what to do with it. We, it's not ours. We didn't get it. It was gifted. So we don't know if we should, like if selling it or using it for mileage is an option or if another department wants to use it for a trade-in. I just wanted to get your thoughts. It, it, it does sit there. And I personally don't want to send, like mandate staff to use it this time of year. It needs new tires, needs a new, this sensor.
If we get it to somebody else, a different department to use it for trade-in.
For another one, though.
Probably better off just advertising it for sale. I mean, vehicles like that.
What year, Clayton, what year it is?
It's a two thousand ten.
Sure.
It has close to seventy thousand miles on it. It's low mileage.
That's very low.
But it.
Just needs some more.
It's starting to rust. So like, we need to either, we're gonna have to fix the rust because it's on the door. It's gonna rust through pretty soon. So we.
It would both make a perfect.
It would be great for that because the college kid could put new tires on it. Oil changes are done on time, you know, the routine maintenance. Yes, it's the white one.
I drove that a long time back in Des Moines and hated it.
One time.
I mean, and I, I was fine driving it with Jackie, but I just, I don't feel like Dan needs to squeeze into that.
I guess if, I don't care if it's a vehicle they have or any department, if it's a vehicle that's not being utilized, let's get rid of it. Because it costs us insurance and there's no, if it's sitting there, it's just gonna go downhill.
We can do it either way. What we did, we entered into the thing with Big Iron, where they'll sell county property and stuff. That gets us away from all this advertising expense and all that. They just basically self.
I would highly suggest if you probably just put it out on one of the Facebook pages on who to contact and set a date to accept bids, you're gonna have numerous people coming in.
Okay, Big Iron's the client we wanna use.
So like for, do you, do you want people like health to do that? I'm happy to do that.
Let's create and throw it on an agenda and let them make the decision of what they wanna do, but I think that would be a good idea.
We did, the bad bottom line is we need to order, offer to the public, you know?
Yeah.
Last week you also mentioned maybe getting a vehicle from conservation as well. So hold the two things together. We don't want either of them or.
Sharing ones.
Who, what department was getting a vehicle?
Clayton mentioned something.
Well, we, we're looking at getting a pickup that was from conservation because they're doing the vehicle change, which could leave us with the old rust bucket, white bucket here to get disposed of that. So then we got this vehicle. So we're gonna, actually two vehicles probably in the future, we're gonna have to. And I don't want that conservation issue is gonna transpire.
Probably a year from now, I think.
Oh, that far along.
Yes, it's not. In ten weeks.
Okay, well.
We'll put it on the agenda for Monday.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'll tell me what I need to do?
Yep.
Okay.
Just as a thought, you might wanna take it by like Dunlap's and see what the trade-in value might be on.
I have an in there.
Sometimes you can get it.
Do you know anybody who works at Dunlap's?
I can probably figure that.
It's a Ford.
Yeah.
He'd still give you.
They won't, they won't care.
Okay, I just.
It's a fusion, isn't it? It's a Ford Fusion.
It's not a bad car. It just, there's. Yeah, it's just.
It's just, um.
Yeah, there's like low mileage. It's very low mileage. It'd be a perfect.
It'll be a great college kid car or high school kid car.
Generally, they won't offer you much for a trade-in and then you can have an extra five hundred, some dollars on it and sell it.
There was a reason why the supervisor didn't want it.
Okay. So, thank you. That will be helpful. Um, yeah, so we already discussed office supplies. Yes, we, there was just, or we got more funding, so then we utilized that.
So, okay, so we have still removed one here. I thought, weren't they under our contract?
Yeah, but our department gets them.
Yeah, we break it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as you, as you guys look through this bottom line, the expenses to the revenue, it's three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar, three hundred, three, three, two, four, nine, O of tax dollars, tax asking is what they have. Their revenues is covering everything but that amount.
That pretty consistent.
Last year, we used one hundred and sixty-seven thousand of tax dollars. This year, with our budget amendment, the reestimate, we're at a hun, we'd be at right around a hundred and ninety-three thousand finishing out the year. The increase in the next year is because of, we went from twenty-nine thousand dollar or forty-five thousand dollars in health insurance to a hundred and one thousand. We went from, like, our, our benefits, one of, because of the employees we have.
Two staff taking, two, four staff taking.
Yeah, we went from two to four staff taking benefits.
And like Amy said, some of that is reimbursed through grants, but.
Not all of it is. Sort of like a medical lab and sort of that.
Yeah, so, yeah, medical and lab supplies, we keep. Yeah, so vaccines and then we have.
It's.
It's our, it's COVID supplies, needles, syringes, PPE, stuff Tricia uses when she does her vaccination.
So that's, we had a stockpile from COVID. There's something to expire. We're gonna need to buy new this year, which is the, it's the increase. Like everything inspired, all the gloves, all the needles, all the, and everything you can't use expired items.
Are you, are you having to look at different quantities that you had during COVID since you, since we thought that there was gonna be a higher need at that point? Do we have, are we able to draw that down, Amy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not, yeah, COVID. We won't, we won't stock at COVID levels. We'll stock it. We'll go back to our normal.
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
The prescription meant that's what I was getting out with our flu vaccines and then we keep an EpiPen. It's in case.
This topic has come up several times in discussion. Cleaning services. Are you satisfied with your cleaning services out there?
They do tremendous job.
I think everyone who walks in that hasn't been there compliments how nice and clean the building is.
You think you're getting your money's worth from it?
We do. We have, we are looking into other options.
Yeah, I have some people coming. I have some people coming today to provide a quote just because it's the financially responsible thing to do.
Yeah. It just seemed like it was kind of.
It, it seems high, but they clean other doctors' offices, so they understand the level of thing we need. Things are sanitized. Things are very clean. They also respect HIPAA information. Everything is double locked. But, you know, we don't wanna make a mistake. But we are looking at other places.
Do you, do you split that, that office cleaning with the emergency management or how does that?
So we have, they clean our portion of the building, so we have our fees, and then they clean their portion of the building and they would have a fee.
Is there any financial benefit in combining the two? Where's?
It's the same company. It's by space. It takes.
But your grants are different, so you'd have to put the other bonds.
Um, cleaning cannot be paid for by grants. That's a general fund.
Okay.
Um, that's not reimbursable by grants. So like our, you'll look at our, we haven't gotten there yet, but things that we can share, we do. Like heat, we share. The electric, electricity utilities, those are shared. I'm sorry?
Dumpster.
Dumpster is shared.
Anything we can, we do.
Anything we can, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
That's, that's a great question too, for case, because I didn't know you were getting a bid, so I'd like to jump in on that too, can we get that?
Take him to the senior center too.
One of the really kill artists that we'll talk about and that, yeah.
The senior center or the DHS side?
Yeah, I can ask, um, the people I'm looking at are an older retired couple, couple, they do cleaning for um. Some other businesses in town, and I just happened to hear that they were cleaning for this business or that business, and I said. Would you come and, well, we don't know if we wanna take on anymore.
Okay.
And I said, well, let's look at our bill, you know, like, I'm just trying to save the budget.
You guys are pretty clean people.
We are.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
We are, we're pretty clean, it's not hard to clean our building, it's mop the floor, sanitize toilets, sanitize the exam room. And they dust all the, I mean, like, but it would take two people, two hours to do it all, there's a lot of space out there.
But you're talking about floors, that's a lot of floor space.
It's a lot of floor space, and they do the inside of the windows, and they. You know, when you walk in on it, it's lemony fresh, they do a tremendous job.
So this is weekly, they come out?
They come out weekly, they, and they, you know, we could look at going every two weeks, but I think bathrooms need to be. I think bathrooms need to be cleaned more than once a week, so I'm giving in on once a week.
Well, remember at one point in time, DHS, they were cleaning.
We clean.
How many times at DHS, we went to once a week at that one?
And um during COVID, our department cleaned our office and our bathrooms on our own. For, from the time COVID started until we hired this company, so we've done our own cleaning.
Well, that was a field boom.
Yeah, and at the new one until, they didn't start until, we moved in in November and they didn't start till like March. So we, we've done it, I don't like it.
Doesn't take a while.
It's not fun.
The bottom line, we're always continuously uh, throw something out there, I don't know, maybe I'll get something thrown back at me for even mentioning this. But there comes to the point where we're doing your department, we're doing EOC out there, we're doing. We're doing the senior center and stuff like that, at what time, when you add all the cleaning services up that we're having done, paying for them. The lawn care and stuff. I think in the future, what needs to be looked at. Is a part-time employee to do all that, that might cut costs, and then that. You've got that individual's more flexible, whenever you contract something. You're not gonna get the contractor to do any more additional with that script in the contract. That's all they do, and anything more is above and beyond, where you got an employee. You can do the above and beyond without costing any additional, so I think at some time in the future, that's what the new board probably should look at. Is that combining all that and getting employee to do all that. Might be a big cost savings, you have more flexibility for that person.
Can we get back to? You're gonna be hungry, probably be more long.
Yeah, we're posted, it just went up a little bit, like we have a, um, Teresa uses um this for her Amish letters, and then we have our High Path April flu project, so. Even mileage and substance, we talked about this a little bit, um, this is just covers. Grant coordinators, sending trainings, we do go to some conferences, so.
The increase this year is Gra, Griffin was elected um through the FEP grant to go to the nature conference. As a new director, the, the service area finds it helpful for them to go and then have a better understanding of the program. That's fully reimbursed by the grant.
Um, phone. This is, I guess, the one thing that we do not share.
Right.
It's just wasn't.
When we did last year's budget, we thought it would be shared with emergency management and um. It wasn't fast enough, the connection wasn't fast enough to share, so they have their connection and we have our connection. So there is an increase in our re-estimate for that line, and then I um just stuck with the same number. For this year.
School of Instruction, we talked about a little bit, um, we're doing a. All-clear or tabletop exercise, so that will be reimbursed by the grant.
The School of Instruction, is that where you bring any other people in, is that just specifically for your staff, or is there other people come in for that?
That's paying a subcontract fee to the company All-clear, who was hired through the service area contract. To help us meet our grant deliverables, so they do tabletop exercises. They're helping um the fourteen county partner area get their BERP plans updated. Um, and so it's just helping us meet grant deliverables.
I'm sure all that's covered in your work plan, but would you mind reporting that out to us?
The work plan?
Yes, please.
Natural gas, um, same, same, electricity, the longer we're in the building, we're getting. Just more acquainted with what stuff costs, so.
Right.
Um, snow removal, that is set, lawn care, that is set. Um, the motor, motor, motor vehicle equipment maintenance, that will obviously if we can. Um. The janitorial budget, that's paper products, toilet paper and those sorts of things. For service contracts, part of these. Um, the copier, press control, alarm system, the copier, we can um use. Build with the, the FEP grant, so part of that cost is covered. Um, using membership, um, we are with Nature, IPHA. We went a little slight decrease on that. Um, nothing in the contributions and reimbursement to other government. Our FEP grant reimbursement, we're the fiscal agent, so when we reimburse. Pass through dollar. Uh, nothing in cares, cleaning services, we've discussed, and we're looking into. Not anticipating any equipment. Uh, for our computer equipment and software, our current computer systems, our computers displays were all purchased through a technology grant. Um, and so we need to get back on every year, replacing a computer, so.
We, they last four years, we update every four years. Certain computers are purchased through grant dollars, so like um fifty percent of mine is through the FEP grant. A hundred percent of the grant coordinators. And then um Teresa and Griffins, we tried to use. Twenty-five percent of it, we try to build the different grants um to utilize those funds. And the reason for the increase is um when I'm reading through technology and what they're predicting for future. I'm not sure what the tariffs will do to cost, and I figured to add that in so that I could purchase the computer when needed. If I didn't have it in my line, I wouldn't be able to spend it because it wasn't there.
Can you ask Jason a question? We're getting computers in budgets.
So, we, um, our department, we tend not to use the IT's budget for our. Stuff because we can bill it to the grants, we can use it as match, most of our grants do require a ten percent match. So, we work hard to um. To utilize those funds as best we can.
Okay.
Do you ever use uh, there's states, have you ever looked at using state contracts or anything? You're allowed to do that.
When I purchase a computer, I talk to the IT director, I tell him that I would like to. Buy a new computer and what I want to use it for, he tells me the specs, he provides the quotes. We present to the Board of Health, the Board of Health approves the expenditure or they don't, we go back to the drawing board. I don't purchase a technology without working with the IT guy, so I assume he's going through the state contracts? That you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't know, I. No, I kinda, I kinda tell everybody to make sure that they know that the state contracts are available for anything that they wanna take a look at. Whether it's a better deal or you can get it, but it's available for people to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if any department heads have ever really used the state contracts, but I could be a hundred percent wrong too.
We have. I didn't know we were eligible to. I shop around for paper, like, I do, I call people, I'm like, how much is case paper, okay, I'll go get it. I, you know, we try to be.
Right.
Are there any other questions on the subject, guys?
I got, you know, we're getting rid of your uh vehicle and stuff like that uh. Down here, maybe that's the reason. But the, it's, it's only with the bottom line right above the list and stuff, the ins- insurance vehicles. Did you subtract anything there for get rid of the vehicle?
No, because at the time this was put together, we didn't know what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed, so I would. I would guess that we will have to pay insurance when the insurance is due for this fiscal year, unless it is sold prior. Um, and but then we would remove that from our budget, I would assume, because we won't need that money.
This makes the account inactive, and if it is, if you do have to pay the premium before the vehicle is sold, like. Say you pay it in March, and you sell it the first of April, then you'll get a refund back.
Yeah, so I.
But yeah, then we can just inactive. One, yes.
Why build the insurance, I mean, that, there's a line there, but it's zero all the way across, I mean.
Because it's a line that was created and they haven't used it.
The liability insurance line? Yeah, it's a line that has been, it's, there's some other lines in there that was needed, like the contribution in reimbursement to other governments. That's been zero for five years now, but I think it has to be zero for so many before it can be removed from our budget. I, so.
And when I run these reports, I run them with all accounts, whether there's activity or not. In it, so that's why you'll see on some departments' budgets, there's line items that have no activity. Because that's the way I run the reports. I do it that way because if something happens, a department has says, hey, I need a line item for such and such. That way they can see possibly they may already have it.
Yeah.
And it just hasn't been used.
And then we can say. I would say to Ann, I, I'm going to bill here, do you think that's appropriate or not, and she would say. It would be better to use this, or like when we get the workman's comp, you know, says, this is the account that you should utilize. So we try to um, because it's been in the last two, three years that they've wanted more, things split out.
Yeah.
Follow the independent auditors recommendations, so we're trying to, to get there. It's a process.
Yep.
So, the bottom line here, I think you've mentioned it, the bottom line here, the in, tax asking increase, how much?
Three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, or I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-six cents.
And that's not an increase, that's overall, that's overall.
My um. My increase from, if you did fiscal year twenty-five, for fiscal year twenty-six, what was budgeted. Is six point five seven percent. If you go with our amended fiscal year twenty-five budget, fiscal year twenty-six. The overall increase is a negative eight point two one percent. But I think you want to go from what was originally budgeted for fiscal year twenty-five. To what is budgeted for fiscal year twenty-six, so it's a six point five seven increase in expenditures. But that's not all tax dollars.
And it, is it hard to come up with the tax dollar percent versus the grant? Percent, I mean, does that just be a wild guess?
I didn't go through and do that. I didn't know that would be asked.
If you look at, if you guys look at their revenue sheets that were provided for you, you can see the increase in. Amy talked about this, it's gonna be part of the amendment, they originally budgeted a revenue. Excuse me, of eight hundred and fifty thousand, but now it's one point one million.
I don't think that's a budget we have no control over.
Looks great.
Can we go through revenues then? Someone just asked questions about it, will you have them? Most of our revenues are not staying the same, or are staying the same, immunization grants, local health services grant, those are staying the same. With any grant, if they offer us. Or, we, we take it and spend it, so local health services, if other counties aren't spending. They open it up, and last year we got eighty-five hundred dollars that we spent, so. Um, with our emergency preparedness, that line item, obviously it increased, but we're expecting carryover funds, so. We'll get those in fiscal year twenty-five, but they might not be spent until twenty, or might not be reimbursed until. They'll be spent in twenty-five, might not be reimbursed until fiscal year twenty-six, so. But yeah, we're estimating two hundred seventeen thousand. Otherwise, everything else pretty much is saying, the multi-year response grant, ERC, multi-year response. The thirty thousand is the High Path, and then fifteen thousand was the Bridge Access, and those were ones we didn't anticipate, but. They were offered, so we.
These unused grant dollars that's maybe available, those other counties didn't use, is that a last-minute scramble for you then?
Sometimes it is, but like with that eighty-five hundred, that was local public health, they allowed us to go back. Um, the last time I submitted a bill to them was like February, so they let us go from March through June. And submit time. Cause like, we do a daily time study, so I was able to submit time and get those dollars came in. Um, and we didn't have to use tax dollars to cover those wages. So like, when you look at it that way, it's a cost-saving measure, and we didn't have to. And they were specific in what it could be used for. So we can't go, we can't use it to pay the light bill. But we can use it to pay staff's time if they worked under that area.
Yeah, and they've told us this year that they're going to, uh, our regional community health consultant, they're gonna keep a better eye on that, and so instead of waiting until March. It might be January, and then they'll be like, okay.
That'd be good, last-minute scrambles are not good sometimes.
Yeah, we, we figured it out, but yes, um, same thing with the Bridge Access, we had a lot, not a lot of time, but. Um, yeah, they're hoping at the state level to make that.
Or nothing else?
Uh, nothing else.
I guess.
Thank you for your time.
We got, thank you for that.
I was gonna say, I gotta say, these are the updated.
I wish that's next.
She got the, if you get the name also.
Yeah, I think it was all we kept.
If I send you the work plan, can you just, this is, you can also set up?
Send it to me, I'll, I'll forward it to her.
I didn't, I didn't wanna not.
Thank you.
See you ladies.
Appreciate it.
Well, if you didn't see, Randall's just appointed new lieutenant governor. Republican out of Leclerc.
Out where?
Leclerc. Now, Chris Gornoya. Politician.
Oh, yeah.
We just got a text from the legislative committee. Lieutenant Governor, Randall's just appointed one. Republican out of Leclerc.
Never heard your name.
What?
What can he do?
Run for the bunny. No.
Here.
Yeah, I haven't, if you can pronounce a name, I couldn't, I'd never heard of it. I haven't heard the name, so.
I didn't know the name of the last one.
I got it, Adam Gregg.
Greg, that's good.
Adam Gregg, I, I liked Adam, thought he was good.
So she kind of pointed somebody that nobody knows?
Well, we don't know him here, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I like to. And I liked, I liked Adam Gregg, I liked the former lieutenant governor, I thought he was doing a good job.
Hey, we got updated sheets from when you had your.
Meeting Friday.
Mine were just chicken scribbles, but thanks to Ann, I've got the updated ones now.
Let's hope they're right. Okay, double check those.
I've gone through, kind of tried doing a check, and I think.
Double check that.
He looked at it quite good.
What would you like to do first?
Hang on to your wait, Dawn, your wage sheet on the back, though, is still current. I don't think anything changed on that. You sent it to me. Yeah. Do you need that? Would you like a whole piece of paper?
I've listened to earlier, taking it's probably cheaper than reprinting it.
Yeah, we're back together.
Well, that, that affects us all, and I'm glad you had the conversation about, about the cleaning part, cause that was definitely gonna come up here too, but.
You wanna start nine or one?
Start with wages, nine-one-one, EMA, cause nine-one-one's easier than EMA.
Uh, wages, I don't have that sheet, so I didn't print that sheet. Uh, what I did is,
Oh, thank you.
What I did is I just did a basic uh six percent.
Zacks, where'd you arrive at six at?
I put it into the formula and that's where it came out. Arbitrarily picked a number. What was public health at?
Four, four. Yeah, they had it in their spreadsheet at four.
Put a piece on.
Thank you. Okay, that's amazing. Okay, so under your budget, that's on the EMA side, is it? I've, since I don't have that sheet for, I got a little bit of this number, our salary is the currently one twenty-eight, one fifty, the re-estimated is that one twenty-eight, one fifty, and the requested going up to one forty-one, three thirty-nine. Now, that is, that increase, that six percent increase, plus there's another fifty-five hundred dollars, is that right, the right number? They added fifty-five hundred dollars for the overlap for when Rick retires. We have to put that in our budget, this coming for twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll let him talk about that when we get there, but that's why that number's different than that number on the wage sheet. That was something discussed by our board on Friday, that they wanted to do that.
Okay, so. Do you want to go over wages again and go to emergency management?
Yeah. My wages and benefits, everything comes on our, on emergency management now. There was nothing in, there's nothing in the nine-one-one budget that comes from taxes. That's all surcharge.
Do you want to tell someone here?
Do you want me to go over nine-one-one budget now? Okay. I'm just trying to follow along here. Okay, so under uh the uh, I'll just do the re-estimate and the, the budget required next year. Um, the signs, uh, currently I'm keeping the re-estimate at five thousand because we got a few more bills coming out now, I turned a couple in, um, plus we'll have some probably in the spring. Currently, we are telling everybody to get in the sign that they need to install it themselves. Uh, we are getting some kickback from a few people, but for the majority of it, it's going pretty good. You probably saw some bills that we had Gary Gessel install some signs for us. Um, since the road sign crew's not doing it anymore, I, he's doing the signs that Chad Beatty requested signs be at, and then Chad left. He didn't leave a name, didn't leave a phone number, I don't even know if people knew they were getting a sign. So then fuel, uh, we think we got that figured out now?
Can we go back to signs?
Yeah, sure.
It's gonna be ten thousand dollars next year.
No. I have it budgeted for ten thousand dollars, yes. I cannot say we're gonna use ten thousand dollars.
It doesn't matter what you do with this budget, John, because it's all surcharge money, it's not tax asking money, so.
If I don't use it, it goes back into surcharge.
Yeah.
It's easier to overbid it, that way if we do have some big subdivision or something like that, I have the extra money to buy the signs without doing.
Have a hard time understanding how we can go to ten thousand dollars in that line.
Well, it used to be ten thousand dollars.
People are gonna put the both in themselves.
It used to, it used to be at ten thousand dollars and then it got taken down to five thousand dollars. I'm just taking it back up to the ten, uh, two. That way we have roof, cause I, I still gotta buy full signs, hardware, and everything for it.
Yeah, we still have to buy all the supplies.
Yeah.
The biggest thing I see is that there's such a reduction in the sign purchases, it's something found from seven thousand to three thousand and.
Well, that's. What's, what's that?
What's your estimate so far that you would use?
For signs, I've.
Said it's a little more than one thousand ninety-six dollars.
Yeah, I think our, the last bill, I just turned in a three hundred dollar bill, and I haven't got to build my December science bill yet, so it's probably gonna be probably another five hundreds.
It's like you're even a little less than, than target last year, um.
The money just stays, it's, it's, um, you know what, your cell phone bill?
Yeah, I assume it's an item, the platforms that we're referring to.
Yeah.
So, why are we not getting them out, I guess, is my question.
We are getting them out, it's just, there's only, originally we had the, the county or the sign crew doing that, that when they were out doing it, they would do signs. Well, when, what, last year, two years ago, this was Gary Gessel worked it out with them, I, cause I can pay somebody to do it, I was surcharged, to do signs. So we were paying the sign crew when they were out doing it. Well, we got so many signs that got put on them from Chad Beatty and uh,
County Conservation.
Conservation, all of the stuff.
A lot of shows, I'm.
And secondary roads.
And secondary roads.
He did it on his own.
And they said no more.
Yeah.
So then I had, what, fifty, sixty something stacked up.
Fight with.
Yeah.
So we know we are gonna change things that we need to cover, and then it sounds like we still have a deep, a deep hole, we still need to catch up on.
Yeah, I'm wor, I think I'm down to, I'm, I only got about twenty left, I think.
That's always kind of been a struggle in the county, is the signs getting
When I took.
Put up in a timely manner.
When I took over, I think they brought me down almost four hundred signs out of the, that Gary was, didn't put in.
Yeah, actually, it, when we started looking at the old, the ordinance, since the old ordinance went back to where the sheriff was supposed to put in the sign.
Yeah.
But when Chris was hired, the job description was that position put in the signs.
Yeah.
So it's been a, it's been a poke finger, pointing at finger, kind of thing for many years.
I do still, I do, I still do put signs in, when I find them, so.
So as part of the budget item, it sounds like we need to leave it at ten, because we got some catching up to do.
Yeah, well, I just left, I took it back to ten to give us some breathing room.
And this time of year, it's sort of gone a little bit too, because the ground freezing up and stuff, but that doesn't mean they're not still there to do and catch up.
We got a lucky week this week, it gets inside that.
So it's not that I don't put signs out, I do when I have time. Because we, I, cause it takes me out of the, when I do a sign, it takes me out of the office two days. I have to do the one call thirty-six or forty-eight hours beforehand, and then I, so I try doing four to five. And then two days later, I have to go out and put signs in.
Okay, fuel.
Fuel is, is, I fixed that up, it just, I don't know where the fuel costs are going. The four twenty, is that updated with all the changes that you made now?
This is after I did the journal entry on Friday.
And is this fuel for, this is also fuel for our, is this also diesel?
No.
Is this just for your?
Yes, well, no, this ain't just for my, this is only, I only can use this when I go do signs. So if Gary takes, if Gary did signs, he took the truck.
Mm-hmm.
He, when he filled up, he used nine-one-one to fill it up.
Okay.
And I use it, I can use it for when I go out, cause I have to go back out and take pictures
Mm-hmm.
after they're in, to verify everything's been done. Um, I use fuel that way, I put that under surcharge.
Okay. But yes.
Any trainings or meetings I go to under nine-one-one premise, I can use surcharge as fuel.
So this looks like a pretty significant increase there. I mean, if you're gonna need to put that many signs out there, it sounds like it.
Probably the, probably the big thing is before, we were using, most of the time we're using the EMA truck.
We are doing it under EMA, now that we got a nine, or it's a second EMA vehicle, but I drive the second EMA vehicle, and I use that for the nine-one-one stuff, so.
That offsets a little bit, but it is, it's still an increase.
Yep. And it's one of those things, I don't know, do I think I'm gonna use twenty-five hundred? Office supplies, that, that ain't just for me, that's for dispatch also. That we do do, I do pay for fuel if dispatchers go to training also. That's part of the thing. So the office supplies covers me, I know Bozinski has some office supplies, lines in his too. Uh, he's getting better at, at all the dispatch stuff for their daily operation of nine-one-one. Is, he's sending the bills to me now, so that's taken from his budget. Minor equipment, I kept that the same, um, that's just in case something happens in dispatch, like uh monitors, subs, anything that happens, new headsets, they, we're going, it seems like we're going through headsets quite a bit. Um, that's what I use, that's why I buy, I use minor equipment. And tools for, the publication is for the publication of the nine-one-one budget? That's a little loss of office supply, you said that comes, that includes training? No, fuel, I use, I, when, when dispatchers go for training or something like that, they charge the fuel to nine-one-one. Okay, office supplies is for what I use in my office and what dispatches is in their.
Expect a lot more office supplies, do you think that are kind of, they're headsets?
Well, for office supply, that, headsets come out of minor equipment and tools. Um, office supplies is, uh, if I have to, actually I bought one of their copiers. Um, the copier that the dispatchers use in between them, um. I'm trying, I got to separate because of the monitors, the computer stuff that's on a different line item.
Communication, yeah.
Um, headsets, um, chairs. All that stuff, I mean.
Basic day-to-day operation.
Day-to-day operation of the dispatch.
They use it more than what we do in our office, I mean, that's a lot of different setups over there.
Yeah, this, and this, and this doesn't affect the impact of overall budget, this is a separate account.
It's true.
Yeah. And whatever remains in here is keeping here, but if he goes over, then he has to do budget amendment.
Um.
And if he goes over, it comes from, it comes from where?
Surcharge.
Surcharge money, this does not affect the.
Yeah, but the only thing to keep in mind, and I did just go run a, um, fund balance report, is we gotta stay on track with this, that our expenditures aren't completely superseding what we bringing in in revenue.
Right.
For like right now, as of today, the fund balance for surcharge is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But if you look at next year, for the requested expenses, it's six hundred and thirty-six thousand, but the requested revenue is only two eleven?
There, there's a, I mean, I'll talk about that. So like the, legal notice is two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's just depending on the, the, the budget. It should go down now, since we only have one, but we don't know what that is gonna be yet, I don't know what they're gonna charge. Uh, training services, we did not do anything this year, I haven't done anything in the last few years. Um, next year I'd like to get some new uh Lord Iowa cards and some smart island cards, flyers put out. We do that every few years. But our Lord Iowa just switched platforms, going from R, uh, Old Hill.
Old Red.
No, after Code Red, to Rave.
Oh, brave.
So. Uh, mild and substance, don't do any of that anymore since we uh, the re-estimate's gonna be zero and next year we request zero since I have a vehicle. That was when I went to trainings and conferences and had to drive my own vehicle. Uh, telephone is gonna stay the same. The telephone reoccurring charge, that's what the telcos charged me for nine-one-one lines. Uh, until there is a, the FCC just ruled that telcos can't charge nine-on-ones to provide nine-one-one service. So, but until that comes, official letter comes out, they still don't.
Explain that, please.
Explain what?
What you just said, I, I don't understand.
Every telephone company, Windstream, EB Tel, our Indy Tel, EB Telco, Farmers Mutual, I get billed every month for the trunk lines.
Yes.
That's the nine-one-one lines that go from the, that's them getting it from their telephone company to here.
Yes.
The trunk lines, okay, FCC, well, according to law, they're not supposed to charge to provide, they're not supposed to be charging to provide nine-one-one service, okay? But they are, there's, that's a gray area.
Yeah.
So the state of Iowa asked the FCC to make a ruling on it. And it took a couple of years, and they just made a ruling on it that
Thank you.
it should be getting turned around, I just don't know when.
Sure, appreciate it.
So when that turns around, that'll, that'll be nice.
And it's not uniform across the board, it'd be nice if it was uniform, not uniform numbers, they just arbitrarily
Yeah.
pick out a number and throw it at us.
Over, that makes sense to you, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the school of instructions, that is just for any trainings that I do or the dispatchers do. Um, I've just been requested to bring in a couple of trainings from our dispatch this year, uh, which they're working on now, getting that, so that's why that went up to the twenty-five hundred. I don't know what the cost of it is gonna be yet. For next fiscal, natural gas and LP, that is the gas. Um, the Lee Avenue Tower is the only one that has LP, the rest of Aurora, Rowley and Jessup are all natural gas. Um, so I just didn't, not, just did a five hundred dollar increase to that, cause I'm not sure where gas prices are gonna be. The electricity, um, this one is, I need to do more checking on this, because I pulled up, what I did is I pulled up the, the electrical bills I get for the tower sites, and then I just did that for the extra months left, and it was just under fourteen thousand. So it's less than sixteen thousand dollar budget, why it's only at five thousand now, I don't know.
Because that was probably, that was only five months.
Yeah.
That five, so it runs you about.
And it's not pulled, it wasn't pulled yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And depends on the time of year.
Yeah, so that's how I came up, that's how I got my re-estimate, then I just did a thousand dollars more thinking that that's gonna probably change. Okay, now, now we're getting into the big ones. Sir, service contracts, that's what I paid to maintain all of the nine-one-one system. Um, twenty-five, our, I believe our Raycom contract goes up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand? On year four, I wanna say it's one sixty-five. Every year that goes up, remember I paid for that, that maintenance contract for our radio system at a surcharge. Um, that also covers maintenance on the generators, uh, law, our weed control, um, power inspections. There's a, I got a big list of everything, and it came in for the, came in for uh, twenty-five at a hundred and forty-eight thousand, right in there? All right, forty-eight thousand, so that's how I, the two, sorry, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, that's how I came up with the two fifty for next. That's how I came up with the two fifty for next year. Uh. Repair maintenance and radio equipment. That is, I took that up because that's where if I have any issues, I have to have the funds available to fix stuff. Right now. Um, we just, this will be going up. Close to that fifteen thousand, we just had a, uh.
Generator?
So.
The generator?
No, that's. That's something different.
Okay.
The computers down here. The, what just blew up, what was the other thing that blew up in dispatch?
You have one station, uh, lost the computer.
Yeah, that could, so, that's what that is, it's, if they lose something, I can fix it. Um, real property insurance, that's why I pay for insurance for the, uh, tower sites through ICAP. Forkman's Comp. And then the computer equipment and software. Um, I took that up to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is to buy the, between that and the equipment, okay? The sheriff would like to add a third. Sorry, the dispatchers and the sheriff approach me and I think it's a good idea to add a third dispatch station in our dispatch. Uh, we talked about that. Um. For this year, we talked to Chris, it's just not the cars this year, so I wanna add, I wanna put the money in the budget for I can go after grants. I gotta have the money there to match if we're gonna find a grant for it. It's a federal grant, so we're gonna have to pay for it upfront and get reimbursed for it.
Is that because of an increase in calls coming in, maybe more of the stations?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it keeps going up and up, so we, what I think sheriff's trying to get to is ahead of the game. Um, but inside that also is we're starting to have some issues with generators at my state, at the tower sites. Uh, the generators are two thousand twelve's. Um, they run every Thursday, um. Get tested every Thursday, um, we're having to start replacing hoses and caps and. Um, the Lee Avenue Tower. Right now has a leaking radiator. The Aurora generator has a. Bad. That's the one with the bad board.
Sending board, yeah.
Sending board, and the Jessup. Uh, generator is. Uh, RPMs are going up and down and I can't figure out why. So I did switch and just had, um.
Ziegler one.
Ziegler cast come up, I did have HM crate coming up. But they were charging me an outrageous amount. To come up, service them, and then a few days later, it would fail the, the Thursday run test. So then they charged me to come back up. So I finally got tired of that and called it, had, uh, I keep thinking off tougher, Ziegler come in. Um, and kind of look at everything and do a, a, a. Assessment on where we're at on it. And basically, the idea is to start looking at replacing like one generator a year. Baby on through to get by. Till after fiscal, replace the Lee Avenue and then strategically start replacing them throughout the years.
What's the replacement cost looking at?
Uh, the bid I got for the Lee Avenue, uh, generator is forty-two thousand. I, it's a KW, uh, that one is thirty-five. The rest of them are twenty-five. So it's all about having money there, if I, I'll look for grant, you know me, I always look for grants first. I will try getting grants for stuff, but I have to have the money in my budget to, if I do get a grant. So. Whether we do the station three or not, that's. I won't do it unless we get a grant for it. But I have to have the money there since, since with surcharge, if I don't get it, it'll go back in, roll back over and stuff like that. But if we do, can get a matching grant, a grant to help it. I'd love to have the money there to do.
Which one's got the, uh, computerized, uh. Control board that's.
For our.
Ours.
Well, what I actually know about them is that's, you know, replacing radiator hose or radiator is one thing, but when you're getting into the electronic stuff. A lot of times that stuff's not available.
Yeah. Well, the generics are, they can still get parts for them. So far. Uh. Um, cuz this is actually the third generator company we've been through, cuz best service, the original one that James had contracted with was best services. Uh, we had those for three or four years. Um, and that kind of got. Sketchy, then they couldn't fix stuff and just wanted to start replacing stuff. Well, that's when I found HM Craig, they came in and did everything, it's just their cost is so much. I mean, it's, I'm. I've, I'm scared to see what. But I have contracted with them do twice a year. They come and change oils and do load testing on them, uh, but I have to do for nine and one or under the state. And then anything else above and beyond that, I have to pay for mileage plus.
Who does a physical, who does a physical run test?
Marshall Town.
Marshall Town comes up and does that.
No, they do it remote.
Remote, it's all, it's all remote.
But as far as realizing that we got a leak, a radiator leak or something.
If, if it fails, Raycom goes out and looks. And they report, it's all under their contract, they're, they're, under their contract, they. They work on those issues, right? Marshall Town runs it, if they have, if it fails or if they're, they're, there's a code or something like that, they call their tech, their tech goes out and figures out what it is. If it's with the generator, then they bring it to me, if it's something with their stuff, their computer stuff, then they fix. The generator itself, I have to fix, the equipment to make it, make it mobile, run and go into the tower. That is on that.
Who does it, how often is a physical onsite inspection done?
First year, first year.
Or twice, sorry.
It's in Miami.
Well, one thing that was discussed too at nine and one and that leads to our discussion, we, we know we've got some local, local companies that have, uh, opened up if we can. Possibly look at that, and I mean, there's gotta be better ways, as you mentioned, when we were having trouble.
And it's not like, it's not like that we just don't go out there, if, if there's a one or something, Raycom comes on, I go out there. That way I know kind of what's going on.
Right.
They get notified first, we get notified second, and the sheriff.
Sure.
The sheriff does too.
So that's why that number jumps up. It's just in case we can get, find funds to replace the generator or do station three.
Mm-hmm. I only had one other question for you. For your training and your mileage, when we have a new dispatcher, do they go to Des Moines for training sometimes?
Some do, I think Peyton went to Clinton, this last one.
Do you have to pay their mileage or their meals while they're gone at that?
He never turned that into me, I can, but I think Scott usually takes that under his.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
We're having the same question, you know, for John, turn all the thing, you got off the mirrors and stuff.
No, that's. Scott usually takes that.
And there's nothing overnight, it's long distance enough that's overnight.
Yes, Peyton was down in Clinton, I think for four days.
Three or four days.
Did they pay for that?
I paid for the class itself, Bozinski paid for the overnight and stuff like that.
Okay.
I believe.
Some, they, they always split it up on their credit card for me.
Yeah, we tried to. But he, she took, if they, if dispatcher goes somewhere, they take. Sheriff's, uh, credit card. Um, Brittany, she'll send me the invoice for it. But when she gets it, and I'll pay that out of. My budget, not his.
Mm-hmm. Well, so I just want to point out with the fund balances, and I have no. Decision-making power by any means. So. His expenditures to the revenues, and I realize there's a couple of big projects in there. It's. The revenues are four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine twenty-eight or less than the revenues, okay? This current fund balance. Is seven hundred and seventy thousand, so. What's basically happening is year by year, we're dwindling down the fund balance. And I just hope that one of these times we can. Kind of come across where we get a little closer to what we're bringing in, to what we're expending. Because I don't wanna get that fund balance so low that I'm gonna stop issuing checks out of that fund. Because I legally, I cannot issue a check if there's no money in that fund. And I just don't wanna be put in that position.
Right.
What's a good cushion dollar? That would be fun balance.
Might require a study, I, I think that's a great question.
Good question.
Don't see what.
Traditionally, traditionally, around a million, probably, traditionally, eight to nine hundred thousand.
Well, the problem is, they want us to. They want us to designate what that money, legislature sees, all that money sits in there and they're trying to get to this.
Doesn't it also depend on like, if you have big projects that you're saving, you know, you're carrying over for three, four years to spend on a big project?
We did our radio something. I try keeping. What we bring in is roughly. It, it varies year to year, I'd say two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For, um, for, uh, surcharge every year. Is that pretty close, Chris?
One of your screens, sir.
I think last year.
Um, this, last year you had two seventy-eight, nine thirty. And this year you're looking at two eleven, four ninety-four is what you have requested.
Yeah. So that, that is, that all faces on who gets new cell phones, who gets their house lines.
Yep, and if you continue to look at his revenue sheet, our revenue yearly drops down. It's, that's continuing to drop also, so that's another factor to keep in the, in your head.
A lot of that probably got to do with people getting rid of a lot of landlines.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm sure, but I mean, so like twenty-two, twenty-three, we had two, two hundred and eighty-three dot thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two seventy-eight, small drop, not much. And right now our reestimate is two hundred and sixteen.
Yeah.
Very good.
I don't, I don't understand how people can get rid of landlines because how do you find your cell phone when you misplace it?
Man, find my phone app.
Find my phone, like three sixty.
I'm watching.
So, yeah.
See, that's the problem, I gotta keep trying that because I used to lose my phone and I'd say, Doris, would you call me?
Would you call me so I know where it's at?
There, not even worth calling.
Absolutely, I still do. Absolutely.
I, I see what you're getting, yeah, I, I do too, when you know that revenue keeps going down and.
Yeah.
Right.
Costs up there, revenue down.
Yep.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I just don't want everybody coming at me yelling and screaming when.
When you can't write a check.
No, I'm.
Yeah, I get yelled at.
Said I was sorry.
I mean, I just don't wanna be put in that position, but.
Yeah, I mean, and if he doesn't spend it, he doesn't get the grants, and obviously the money's not gonna be spent in some of these projects.
Yeah, I, I know, but it's.
Station three.
It's just been, uh, each year, and I just wanna point it out that it's just something we need to keep in the back of our minds. And as far as those projects go, I, I mean. Especially.
I do know in the past that them fund balances have been looked at, I remember years back, when they even went as far as looking at trustee, township trustee fund balances. And they were looking at, well, there's reason for that, you're saving up for a fire truck or something, you know?
Right. But at least if, you know, and even in those cases, it is designated and that's pretty easy to do. Uh, this designate doesn't mean, like I said, those projects and those things that we look at, yeah. That, that, you gotta put that priority list together and that's what we do.
Yeah.
Um. Probably would be interesting, and there might be some things available now, there's probably, I don't know if anybody's done a study, but we've had so much change in state on nine-one-one stuff. There's probably some information out there now if we just ask the right people, those I know.
I mean, utilities. To himself as a telecom guy and he says, I'm a dinosaur, I'm being, becoming extinct.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the price of digital, there's so much more. Maintain to run.
You might call the utilities conditions, he, he's got some ideas for it.
You don't be fortunate on that idea either, that's, cuz they're all gonna be looking at it, it affects them all.
And this, cuz I got the call from Blake about, we need to designate some of that money. Well, that's kinda, that's how we started talking about different stuff and then the dispatchers called me that night that they, they were swamped, they, they couldn't move.
And the Blake's he's referring to, Blake Druzyk, same, same reference that was, your contact with Elizabeth. And his contact with Blake or our contact with Blake and we'll figure.
Who's the state nine-one-one? For me.
Figure out what.
Yeah, like the other departments, uh, highway, highway department's got a five-year plan, uh, public health, their, their master plan, you know? Have you put pens, paper, thoughts of paper on kind of a strategic?
We have, we, we actually, that's on our list to update.
Needs to be updated.
Needs, yeah.